Excess appropriation?
No.
Turn back.
Well, it's the same.
Yeah, okay. That's what you're gonna fund it with?
The radios in these ones and it's, these are ongoing recurrent costs each every year.
And it would be good next year to see, and I know it requires a little bit of a mindset, but if it's going to be an ongoing thing, you know, it'd be good to kind of shift that into the operating budget if we can in the future. I know it's tough because that, anyway, just might state that.
That's a debate we always have. If it's something that occurs every year, it'll be a budget.
The board of directors and the finance committee need to come together on that end for the budgeting purposes.
I realize they have a different view than we do, and that's not a conversation we're gonna resolve this year for this term meeting, but next year we should have the conversation because...
So what you're saying though is that we're not gonna put this in the annual town budget, we're gonna put it in the special town meeting, any this year's funds are gonna be done.
That's what you're gonna use this year.
What differences would make? Why?
Doesn't the special town...
The difference is that you can use money that we have available this year now without it falling to free cash, which is not available into the year after. That's the only difference, right?
Yeah, so you can use it for a twenty-one.
But in a sense, if this is an ongoing thing, I don't think those things really belong in the STM, just for a second. I don't necessarily wanna change things at this juncture, but from a philosophical point of view where we're going, I don't think we wanna put in required year-by-year things such as agreed-to, not maybe required, but agreed-to things in the STM, at least in the ATM.
It's, 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 these two items, particularly the portable radios and the turnout gear, they don't have a very neat place to live.
Yeah.
You know, there's been some conversations about putting them in the budget, as I understand it, in the past. You know, our budgets, we've gone through the budget. We know it's trying to keep that budget as tight as possible, not grow it. And so, I'm trying to be conscious of that, at the same time looking at, knowing this is a recurrent cost year-over-year, what portable radios and equipment, you know, as a capital, free cash, it doesn't necessarily fit that perfectly either.
But you can't do it as warrant articles though.
Standalone.
Standalone warrant.
Standalone warrant.
I mean, that's a possible way to do so on this.
Would that, and I'm...
Which is gonna be, the same thing probably at the STM, it would be a separate warrant article. Yeah.
Right.
It would be.
A separate warrant on the STM and say that the money's coming from this fund or that fund for coming back, sorry. Anyway, I don't wanna change things now, but I think from a philosophical point of view, we wanna think about something like that.
Yep. Rebuild any pump. So the pump currently only has thirty thousand miles on it. Annually it needs to be tested to meet national standards, and in September it failed the pump test. And so this line item here, the twenty thousand dollars, is to bring that up to compliance. And then, so if we retest it and then put it back out, you know, the pump, you know, certification.
Well, yeah, but the mileage on the truck and the pump repair are two totally different things. Okay, this is not the engine for the truck. This is a pump engine. That's all it is. It's a pump.
Right, but it hasn't been used that much.
Well, it doesn't get used that much, but yeah.
And so...
But like I said, it has nothing to do with the mileage on the truck. Neither one of them get a lot of usage, okay?
Right, it's just indicative that there isn't a lot of usage on it.
But the other thing too is if you're in a situation where you're doing testing or actual use, if for some reason or other there are sort of gross filters when you're bringing water in, but if you're pumping from a brook to try and get that house out and sharp pebbles get into there that somehow go into it, the impeller can get damaged. And so when they take it apart, if they believe it is and they've seen, the impeller may just have been, it's like an outward board, you have an outward boat to tell you, replace the impeller every two years minimum, and most people do it every one, because it's not something you wanna have fail and normal wear and tear.
So we won't know until they actually go in and take a look at it?
But it's, it's...
It's a tear-down.
That is correct. That's what identifies likely the cost for it.
The tear-down, and when you take it down to the point of the impeller, you replace all the other seals, you check the scoring of the inside of the pump.
Well, you would check everything while you're...
Could I just understand how this pumper is now used in service? If there is a, an accident on Route One with a car and no fire, okay, the pumper can go. But if there's a fire, this pumper needs to stay in the firehouse because it's, it failed to do pumping, which is a necessary thing to do for a fire, but...
Well, it failed the test, but I'm...
I think it's still in operation.
It's still in operation, okay.
It's just, I think that we're supposed to meet certain national standards regarding the...
But it's still safe to use?
I believe so.
For a fire, okay.
I believe so.
Okay, I think it's important to understand.
My guess is they have a, when they do the test, if it's at ninety percent pressure and ninety percent flow, they probably give a provisional waiver, but replace it within a certain period of time. If the water just dribbles out the end, then it's out of service.
Okay, good. This is the school's school's thing.
Yeah, so the...
But interestingly enough, we also should be aware that out three years, there is a request. Nope, that's the different engine. Nope, replace engine too, thank you, nevermind.
Yep. So I spoke with Dr. Morrison, the union superintendent, a few weeks back around feasibility study and ADA compliance, as well as the master clock system replacement. The feasibility study and ADA compliance, there was a student and a family who had basically requested through the ADA access board at the state for a review of the ADA compliance at the schools. Actually, it was at Proctor School, or I'm sorry, Stewart School. Students will be going through the school system. So rather than looking at one school independently, looking at both, was what was decided, kinda get ahead of that issue if there is one. But what they, what they have done is basically, there was a, there's a long process associated with it, and what was determined by the state is that the school district would have to take a hard look at our ADA compliances. And so, one of the issues is the parking lot, for example, and the grade that that parking lot's at, which it was deemed that it is at a higher grade than what's allowed by the ADA access board. They, in theory, could require the local community, the school in this case, to regrade and redo that, that's the parking lot to meet ADA requirements, which could be a heavy number. But what they're trying to do to get ahead of all that is to do this feasibility study around ADA compliance, to understand where are those potential areas of compliance issues that might exist. Once they have that, they'll then put together a plan of addressing over a period of time, not in one year, but a period of time, those types of issues that are identified in the report around ADA.
Yeah, I talked with Scott about this a month ago, a couple, yeah, a month ago, and it's really interesting. They actually had a complaint from a parent, and it was because of a puddle where the wheelchair ramp was. And you can't have standing water. There's a lot of things. For instance, if there's anything more than a quarter inch gap in levels anywhere in the pathway, if somebody's using a wheelchair, that's out of compliance. Well, earth subsidence can do that. And there's all kinds of things there. Interestingly, they've had, I think there was this particular complaint at, not Spofford Farm, that's the other school.
Oh.
Cole School, yeah, right by his office there. And the initial assessment is that they fixed everything. They're hoping they don't have to do everything. Fix everything will require significant regrading. To meet ADA requirements, they'd have to spend a million dollars just on surrounding sidewalks, streets, regrading and drainage on that school to meet ADA. And what he's trying to do is get ahead of that, because when the word starts to spread, and also what happens is, the state and the feds come and they look at the district, not just the town that it was in, and he figures if it gets ahead, we can figure out what it is and probably forestall punitive measures by those compliance bodies if they can identify it and start, you know, dealing with the most serious ones. He said all around the tri-towns, there's probably an excess of five million dollars' worth of ADA compliance work that would need to be done. And this is, A, to tell us exactly what might be, and take care of the glaring errors.
So to some extent, this is one of those things that requires a certain degree of common sense. The first thing is that the schools should understand that half of the cost of that five million dollars in the district will be taken away from the school's educational program because towns can't afford the five million dollars, but the towns will share half of it with them. Second thing is that the basic rules on ADA had been that as long as you were compliant with the rules when the particular project was built, then you're all right unless you make a major change over thirty percent of whatever else, then you had to bring it up to date. The question in point then is to what extent this is still the case in these cases, whether the children involved, or they have new statutes that say you have to do it immediately or something of that nature. But we really should try to understand what that is, and in some cases, maybe turn to our legislators to have them perhaps do some legislation. If all the cities and towns in Massachusetts are being liable for five million dollars' worth, quote, in other words, I'm not sure that we're very different from anybody else, that perhaps they need to look at what legislation they have put in place already, or had not put in place, that could somehow put more common sense on this. These kinds of numbers just do not make sense. If there's a problem and there's a puddle that should not be there, hopefully we'll fix that post haste and take care of that. But arbitrarily, is to start changing roadways where they were built properly the first time? I think that's a major question that we have to push back on before we do it. We may have to do it, but not just because it's a nice thing to do. So I do have some questions then about spending the time to go find out all of these things. Maybe it's a right thing to go find out all these things, but the moment you find out what those things are, two months later, you could do the same study and they'll come up with five rules. Why? Because either some law has changed, or some guidelines have changed, some regulations have changed, typically that's the case, that say, oh, and also this needs to be done. So we can be chasing our tail if we're not careful and trying to understand all the things that need to be done today, tomorrow, and next year.
Absolutely no question about that. I think that there's a whole bunch of work that needs to be done on the state or state level on ADA compliance.
Kevin, could you speak to the district? So if they're doing the assessment, they're just doing it at the schools, compliance issues?
There'll be an assessment of ADA compliance at each of our schools, and I believe he's also looking through the other schools as well.
Okay, and so when you say it needs to the district, what does that mean? Does that roll out too, or somehow involve the rest of the town, the roads within the town? Does it go beyond the school, or does it stays contained within the schools, but it would pertain to the three towns perhaps because they're regional?
We own the buildings and the grounds that they're on, so therefore we would have to pay for that. Masco had an issue with an ADA complaint about some broken concrete on a sidewalk that was near the south entrance and the link entrance, and people, you know, they had to go replace that. That was a degradation, number one. But when a complaint gets made, we're kind of in the backseat because we're...
I think my question's more geared to what does district mean?
I see, yeah. Masco had to pay for it, Masco, school property in this case, yeah.
So we do the two schools. What does it mean that it could implicate the district or involve the district?
So for the purpose of the term district, it's Boxer, Middleton, Topsfield, their elementary middle, or elementary, sorry. And the, this sort of trigger and the conversation that's been happening with the access board, they're looking at holistically for their district, which is the three school districts in their elementary schools.
So if something is uncovered in one of our two studies, does it in some way then require the analysis in Middleton or Boxer because Scott heads up the district?
No, he's looking at...
It just pertains to our schools.
It might trigger it, it might trigger it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What, what does that mean?
So he's looking to proactively look at all of the schools anyway, to have a plan. Typically, what happens with the access board is if somebody were to complain two years from now after the assessment's done, and they say that there's another puddle in front of a ramp, for just example, we'll have a feasibility study, and Scott's playing to put together an action plan over, you know, five or ten years of how to address a number of these issues. Access board will say, we got a complaint, we're gonna do about it. And typically, you can hold a feasibility study and say, we have a ten-year plan to address these, we're working on it. And they're usually pretty good about that. They know that you're, it's, a lot of times it's like getting a permit if somebody's out of compliance and you work with them and say, yep, okay, we need to do this, you go back, you go fix the problem, and you go back to the land and you say, fix the issue.
Is he also doing this then in Middleton and Boxer?
That's my understanding, yes.
So it's district-wide?
I haven't seen their capital reports, but that's why I talked with Scott. His plan was to do all the districts, so those other communities, just the schools, their elementary schools.
This year?
Just like we're doing here, so that we have this in our back pocket and we can start building plans for the future. And he admitted, you know, some of it from a capital standpoint, the costs associated with it might not be realistic. But knowing what exposure there is for each of the schools is really, I think, a big part of the end game. And then sort of chip away some of that low hanging fruit, the stuff that they can fix pretty quickly to get, become compliant.
I think Boxford, the Cole School, is facing a six-figure repair bill just to meet the most egregious issues there right off the bat, because there was a, I was a complaint or a suit by a parent of a handicapped child, and that just triggered this whole thing going down.
Just an observation, having some experience in that area. If we do a feasibility study, it's a public document. Does that put us at some degree of liability to take action, fix those identified elements?
That's why there needs to be an action plan, but I realize this is a catch twenty-two, which is a catch twenty-two.
It's landing very quickly when there's a legitimate issue, which we should anyways. If there's a puddle or somebody has trouble, fix it right away, immediately. But I think if we put out some of these borderline issues, you could be asking for trouble. And as Dick said, I've had some experience where your grandfather, too, I'm not exactly sure where the law is, I think we wanna do what's right for the kids, but not potentially put out, oh, it'll give parents potential ammunition if they're not happy. So it just might.
Yeah. No, I think we're in a catch twenty-two, and so, but as Kevin says, and I know Scott feels this, that if we know what the issues are and we have a plan to address them, that will forestall legal action sometimes in ways that we will be given credit for having become proactive about it. That's the goal. We don't do anything quickly, do we?
No, that's fine. It's a good, it's an important, because the feasibility study has a standalone twenty thousand dollars. We should be knowing that down the road, there might be more cost issues.
Sure.
Capitalize. Stewart and Proctor, master clock system replacement. I had spoken with Dr. Morrison on this, and he indicated that this, at each school's, the master clock system is the system that basically the entire school uses to keep time. He indicated that there's a need for replacement of those.
And the bell.
And the bell's taken. And so this, this is what the thirty-five thousand, I will note the hoop, and I mentioned it earlier, that this has been put into the van premium component of it, so it's not in the capital, free cash capital, it's in a separate line item funding mechanism. Part of the reason I did that, wasn't necessary, but it felt right in that, in that van, a large component of what made up that premium was related to the school roofs.
Yeah.
So tried to tie it to the schools, and seventy-three thousand is the number we had, so came up with seventy there, so it made sense. The fire safety sprinkler system at the highway water facility, it's kind of interesting, that's our water facility, but our sprinklers don't have water.
That's an interesting story.
Right. So what, my understanding is when it was built out, sprinklers were put in, but the needed infrastructure to add water into those sprinklers was not, was not done, was not performed. I don't know if it was a budgetary issue or something.
What they did is they, to save a lot of money, they didn't wanna run a pipe all the way up, the hill, which is expensive, I think they call it dry stack system, which means the pumper can go, hook one of their big hoses up, this pumper that probably pumps ninety percent or whatever, and it goes in and feeds the sprinkler system. But until that pump arrives and puts in there, it doesn't go. With the completion of the water facility, a sprinkler system was put on and the line was run up from the street. This cost, as I understand it, is basically to tee off that and add a wet stack, meaning there's always water in the system that can go as soon as the sprinkler is called upon to do its job. It's just to connect what's already there. I think basically all the equipment fits outside. It's just connecting to what's there, because the sprinklers are in the highway department at this time.
It's there. It's all there. And you're absolutely right. With the addition of the water treatment plant, the booster station down by the Route One was built to provide adequate water pressure to the highway and the water treatment plant, and this is hooking the thing up, and it's paid for part by highway department and part by water.
Have we had an issue with when that truck burned up or so, two, four years ago? So if that had been inside, then very much more expensive.
Using Robbins priorities, capital priorities, it's indicated that that is a one, comma, two. One is protect the public and employees against a clear and immediate danger. I don't believe that having the sprinklers in there protects them from a clear and immediate danger. If there's a fire, they get out. There's not a problem with going down ten stories or anything else. So I, I think that that's a misnomer, calling it a one. And then the second one is risk to property. Well, it certainly is a risk to property to not be sprinkled. However, it says protect critical equipment and facilities from further deterioration. There's no deterioration involved with this. It doesn't keep the salt from running out the beds of trucks and things like that. So I think that as an example, because this is a big deal, how we're gonna figure out what to put here and what the priorities are, that that evaluation is inappropriate. So this is where you can afford, you've got more experience on this. I cannot possibly justify seven, as it turns out, seventy-five, sixty-five thousand dollars for trying to make this hookup. And hopefully this hookup doesn't really put water in the things, it puts gas in the things, and therefore they're gonna change the heads and whatever else. And if there's a problem, then the valve opens up and the water goes in and fills up the gaseous thing and whatever else and sprinkles it. That's why it's that much money. But I can't possibly justify trying to do that automatic sprinkler for that much money. I mean, live that way for fifteen, twenty years, we have it.
Oh, I'll be on my half, okay, yep, got you.
Without it, can you have a fire in there? Yes. Are there problems when you put in sprinkler system? Yeah, sometimes they're failing, they create a problem in their own sense, but you're very much involved with it.
Well, we've lived for fifteen years without it, so you can almost rest your case.
The other question I would have is, what's the impact on insurance premium?
And I would love to know, but I'm afraid to ask.
Because I mean, this is one of the things they...
Let me explain.
If you don't do it, and you could do it, then, you know, premiums might hit a subside there.
How much would you reduce our premium if you, oh, oh, it's not automatic?
Yeah.
Oh, your premium's going up next year. If you can fix them, we'll drop it down.
Yeah, I'm sure they know, unless they...
I, I just have a hard time. That's my personal opinion and...
Is this the only building, town building, that doesn't have an automatic sprinkler tied in, or do we have other buildings in this situation?
We have it here, we have it at the library. I don't know for certain on the police and fire.
What about the fire? That's got the most expensive equipment.
Right, I don't know for certain. I, I, it's almost like the water department doesn't have a wet sprinkler system, the fire department might have.
I'd be surprised if the fire station's got an automatic.
It's an older building, it's a, and at some point, those buildings were probably built before the requirement of having those sprinkler systems.
And the police station is overbuilding the that, okay, but that was built by the state, and it was built like a battleship, so it might be equipped with sprinklers.
From the nineteen thirty's battleship.
Yeah.
I could find that out for certain, which buildings are wet, which, or has sprinklers in them. I don't know that off the top of my head. I know most do. Schools obviously included.
Yeah.
But...
How much time does this save as opposed to the way that we currently do it with hooking up outside? So how much quicker could we get to a fire if this were to go in?
Fifteen minutes.
I, I don't, I don't know for certain. I'd have to...
Well, yeah.
It's as simple as this. The truck has to make, a truck, meaning pump, has to make it to that location. Once they're there, it's, can't be more than five minutes, because there's a hydrant right there, and there's the plug to pump it in right there. So that hookup is gonna take five minutes or something like that. So Mike, we need to find the answer to the question, but if I have to put money on it, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes is about right.
Time to get the truck.
There's a lot of burning in fifteen minutes, I would imagine.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
There's also a lot of chemicals in those buildings that have...
And we get chemicals, and we get expensive equipment in the highway garage, and the new water treatment plant is full of expensive equipment.
But it's covered. This is not, this has nothing to do with the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant has the sprinkler, it's working. This is only for the highway garage.
This... Water Enterprise, Public Works Building Fire System Upgrade. Why is it under Water Enterprise if they already have it?
Well, because they, they share the building.
They share the building.
They share the building, and when it comes to...
And so they're just sharing the cost.
When it comes to heating, whatever the things are, okay.
So do we have chemicals in that building?
We have all kinds of salt in there.
Besides salts.
So the building, the building setup, it...
Casualty and glory, for sure.
There's office space when you first walk in the front of the entrance. There's one, two, three, four offices and a conference room and a break room, bathrooms. Then you go beyond that, and then it's the, your more typical garage, where they store the vehicles, heavy equipment and light equipment. Behind that and around the corner, there's a facility for repairs. If they were, they have a lift there as well, they can do oil changes and other types of things. If you're doing oil changes and other types of things, there's some chemicals associated with that as well. But it's mostly housing a lot of the equipment, but it also houses our people when they are back from out being out of jobs.
We, we had a truck go on fire. How much did it cost us to replace that truck?
Well, it was insurance. There was a cost to town, but we did get some insurance from that.
Seven hundred forty pounds of pounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Hundred and sixty pounds, depending on how long it has.
We just tried to weigh...
I think maybe about half is insurance.
The cost of putting in the sprinkler system with the cost of what we could lose, what could be the complication.
What we had to pay to replace that after insurance was roughly equivalent of the cost of doing this.
Right, yes.
Now, they got that truck out. My understanding is it ended burning in the yard.
It did. Like if you had a fire in this building and had equipment in it, and looking at least that cost.
But if it had just been driven, if somebody was at the end of a shift, just drove it, walked out, and felt the engine's hot, the same thing happened. The other thing too is that once it starts to go, it's not a case of somebody just going in and they can put it out, unless they have a hand on the fire extinguisher right there. It could be big enough right off the bat, they couldn't do even, but anyway.
Yeah, just to do the cost benefit that they mentioned, what, what could we risk versus the sixty-five thousand?
It's more of a risk benefit.
This isn't, this isn't a lot of money when you consider the price and the value of the equipment that's in the building.
It's a risk benefit more than cost benefit.
It's also a lot of time building at times, too.
It is, most of the time.
And that affects insurance rates, too.
In which case it burns unless something's...
Yeah.
It's, it's certainly something that the department, and there is a split, so half of the cost to do it is coming out of the Water Enterprise Fund, so...
I define with this, I, I think it's justified.
So that's a conversation. Security cameras. So at the library, there's requests for fifteen thousand dollars to install security cameras in the building. We have spoken with trustees of funds about whether or not this would qualify for Gould Fund B, and it was determined not. There is some other capital projects that the library has planned, which they will leverage, they will fund to pay for. This one was beyond that, so it was included in the capital on our end for it. Generally, obviously, security cameras, you can imagine, library, some of the activities, I think there was ninety DVDs stolen last year, roughly, maybe it wasn't last year, but I think in total, ninety DVDs were stolen, have been stolen from the library over time. There's incidences where, there was some vandalism a year ago in the exterior of the building, some very inappropriate things, as it was explained to me. There's no way to track down who had done that. So there's, library's a very public place, and Topsfield's very heavily used, so having that security built is to deter people potentially from doing something inappropriate, is a deterrent, A. And B, in the event that unfortunately there's a bad situation, there's... And B, in the event that unfortunately there's a bad situation, there's some record of it and you can go back and address the appropriate people on it, so.
Do they have any cameras right now?
Not, my understanding is they do not.
You have commented a question. There was one time, I can't remember where it was, but again, I don't want to be an alarmist, but there was a sexual predator and he hung out in the library. Because that's, the kid, parents dropped the kids off, there's a library staff there and the kids would do, or they would, in this case, cause from prompter. So having cameras is good in that regard, I think is important. One of the questions that I would hope is being thought about is cameras are great. How many times have we heard stories of places putting in cameras, but nobody looks at them? And so the question is, is there a training or a personnel plan to be sure that if you can have the cameras there, that they're sort of being used for what they should? Or are they intended to be just passive recorders and you get, you know, a forensic, you go back and grab it?
For forensic purposes.
Yeah, forensic, in that case it's forensic only.
We did it in Beverly. So City Hall was, had very little security for the treasurer's office and for really every department in the building. So we actually received a Mya grant for eight thousand dollars, which allowed us to put three cameras on the interior, first floor, second floor, third floor in the hallways. And then one in the exterior entrance in the back, one in the exterior entrance in the front. There wasn't anything necessary that sparked that, other than you do hear in the news, those unfortunate situations where somebody takes advantage. And the fact that we handle a lot of cash and checks and money in some of our departments. You know, banks have hefty security. We're open to the public, we have to be, it's part of what we do. But, you know, for instance, talked to Laura on this, you know, she's concerned from staff standpoint, there was a stabbing in Wilmington, if you remember. I don't know if they had cameras there or if they did, if they would have deterred somebody from doing what they did. Where it was just somebody who was in a bad place and did a bad thing. Cameras, they're not going to stop someone from doing something necessarily, they're not a physical bearer. But there's something that can be used as a tool to prevent it hopefully from deterrence and also to help you from forensic standpoint, pulls some information. So that's sort of what's behind this.
How many cameras does this represent? If you say you had three floors covered for nine thousand, what, how many cameras are we talking here?
I don't think she gave me. Sorry, eight interior and five exterior cameras.
So this is something that'll be in Laura's office, monitoring or something, do you know?
She'd have, she'd have, it was going to be on storage, the, the film would be on storage for, if they had to go back and look at the films.
That's forensic.
Yes, yeah.
So she's not, there's not going to be monitoring going on.
Oh, monitor, oh, I don't know, yeah.
Okay, that's all right. I just, just, and it's important to know the answer because they'll answer it hopefully at town meeting, the library trustees will, but it's also good for us to have the answer.
So one of the things too is, you know, we've had some conversations, preliminary, very preliminary conversations about a fiber loop in Topsfield that connects all of our buildings, police, library, library here, here and schools. And then eventually we talked about the IT regionalization, just grant funding available and it makes sense for us to connect fiber connecting to the Dammers or some other place in that collaborative effort. We had in Beverly the fiber loop just like that, closed, closed loop of twenty-six nodes that allowed us to basically attach all of the cameras that were, we installed at different buildings back to a master board at the police station where the police could actually monitor all the different cameras in the city. So if there was a call, someone called nine one one for an accident, they could bring it up with a couple clicks and they could see what's going on as they deploy resources to an incident, be able to describe what's going on in real time from the cameras. It was a really nice tool to have. We're not there, we don't have fiber.
We don't, we don't man the police station twenty-four seven. We don't see doing that in the future.
Right. But if there was an incident and we could, basically, the rec could come take a look because they have a link to our loop. That's right, mighty valuable, you know, there's somebody, there's an issue, there's been spandles and lights on, they could see where he was at or she was at.
Less of a fiber network. We could still potentially be able to send this information live to the rec so that they can. They have, I was up there a couple weeks ago and they have a vast amount of resources to be able to monitor different places. And if they're doing those dispatches and not having resource like this, so if there, if ever an incident in the library or other place where there's a camera, they can pull it up pretty quickly and be on the line as they dispense the officer, letting them exactly what to see.
There's a fire alarm at the library. Oh, let me look at the library. No smoke anyplace, I don't know. Oh, a mouse ran across this. It, it has, it has some value in that sort of, in that sense, if in fact it would be connected. That's not what we're talking about though. We're not monitoring at this point, the intent is primarily forensics and in the process to discourage perhaps people from doing things that are not good because of the chemicals. Thank you.
Okay, onward and upward.
Resurface the Times Road and Sports. So I know Steve's spoken, very passionate about this, right under the budget.
Resurface the Grove Street.
Uh, resurface Grove Street and Sports.
Right over here.
Yeah.
There, one second. News page. While you're doing that, just a note.
I was gonna say, at least, at least they've down, downcoded the priority, it's not a one and two.
Well, it's two and four, but, but the two doesn't belong there because essentially it is protect critical equipment and facilities from further deterioration, deterioration, true, not necessarily critical. Okay, but anyway, yeah, Steve knows and I think the point here is that if you don't do it now, it only will get worse.
And it's been a while.
And it's been a while.
It's been a while. And if you want to see what happens if you don't do it, go and take a look at the one that's through.
Thanks to China, okay.
So I think that covered it.
Yep.
And then the hot topic of the roads at the cemetery. So basically, as I understand from Steve, is that year over, they take certain money out of that cemetery account and they do some patchwork, some repaving of the, of the cemetery roadways. And this is in line with what they've done, as they've been explaining to me in prior years, to keep up with the roadways within those facility, within the facility.
Were getting anything as part of the Smith Foundation, that whole business, were getting any benefit out of that for paving more? I know they're contributing money in various ways. Any of it going to paving any roads?
Not yet. So when we met the first.
You mean in the cemetery?
Yeah.
No.
We're not going to use our town roads.
I knew that, I just, I knew there was something in the wind about me.
They're using, they're using it to do the, they're building walking path, the gravel path around the ancient cemetery.
So one of my concerns, and I've said this to Rick Cogger, who's representing the family and the people behind the memorial, was that we're talking about the day, so weekend for the event and the impacts and what will have the resources available for them. The contributions they'll need to make, associate to cover those costs. Ballparking at this point as we narrow down what that scope looks like. They still haven't secured the Topsfield fair yet for the event either. So there's still some work that needs to be done before we've been action, an actual plan. They're estimating two to four thousand people will come through that weekend. I'm concerned with the long time, long-term impacts of this because if you're not able to come down to this weekend and considering the amount of funding that's going to be put in there, quarter million dollars. There'll be a lot of promotion around this within the network and then people will be joining, coming to Topsfield to, to, to look at it. So where is?
Over and over and over.
Yeah, exactly. So what are those impacts? Right now, people stop at ninety-seven during the summer months already to see the cemetery and they park on the shoulder and they let people walk across the street or what have you. In front of residential homes, on a busy road, it's not a very good situation as it exists today. So what I've expressed to the people representing the memorial is that we need to think about long-term impacts. And if there are long-term impacts that need to be addressed infrastructurally because of the impact that you have, we need to have a real conversation about what that looks like for you folks to help us get to that point. Such as creating better, more defined parking areas. If it's on ninety-seven, I don't know if that's a good idea, but like a fifteen minute drop or something like that. That's off the shoulder, that's clearly marked and it has some, you know, curve and some area that's safer. If it's not that, finding an auxiliary location where we can do some paving or some, or find a location to do something. This will have some serious impacts to us to Smith Memorial.
Or, or long-term, being able to bring the bus into the cemetery and turning it around, being able to get it out. Because that is a pedestrian safety, they're not involved with the street at all if they could do that. That discussion went, I thought that's where you were going. That discussion went nowhere at one point, but I still think it's, it's something to be considered. It's a challenge, a bus is a big thing. You gotta look at the piles that are, they gotta be able to turn in and things like that. But the, the public safety aspect of not having it across the street, I think is low worth considering.
Totally different.
But in answer to the question about this, none of this, most of this paving is all, all of the paving is a part of the new, unless we talk about just the entrance way area. So, yeah, and that's.
This is separate from that.
No, I mean, surprise to me is that they're not doing it at once, they're doing it in pieces and they felt that that was an inexpensive way to do it. Sometimes you do a single bit and it's, and I think they're going to try to work off the same bit as the town has the roadway scheme, but.
Yeah, no, I haven't dug too deep into how they've made those decisions. And I know a lot of it, you know, Steve and the commission have worked to sort of come up with sort of the ways they've operated. And one of, just kind of the comment about creating space within that cemetery, ideal if we can, because like you said, it'll pull people off the road. Just from an infrastructure standpoint though, how does that work? And Gary Wilds has been out there at my request multiple times to sort of assess from an infrastructure standpoint, what are the options that we might want to consider? Performing if needed. So we're, we're looking at all the.
There was, there was an article in the paper, a little different subject, but David brought it up to, brought it to my attention. Article in the paper about the size of the endowment of the Mormon church.
Oh, hundred billions.
Five hundred billion.
Oh, five hundred billion.
They're getting Harvard.
It's believed to be the largest endowment fund.
Front page Wall Street Journal, it's unbelievable.
Half a trillion dollars.
Okay, last one.
So last item on this one. Well, this is a request from the cemetery and again, they'll be funding this through the cemetery funds to replace the two thousand nine dump truck with a pickup. It's not, unless you have any questions, no? No, just going to look at them.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'm looking at the time.
This is a nice piece of paper that I would hand you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Excellent. That all said, this is a real question. I guess what I want to do is just look at the whole agenda here briefly. Number six, Economic Development Advisory Committee review. We haven't finalized the conversation yet on those things, so I'm going to take that off agenda today.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're taking off number six, review the bylaw and town meeting warrant and then we have minutes. How long do you think town meeting warrant review is going to take?
I could go through it very high level because there's still a lot of work that needs to be done.
There's a lot of work to do, yeah.
But at least give you a sense of some of the things that are on there. If you just want a quick, I can go through it within five minutes.
If you give a quick summary, let's see if we can hold down conversation on this, this will get us started. Thank you.
So this is very rough. Again, I'm sort of a working document that I'm providing you with, so I've marked on this basically the category of which department requested it. I did mention at the boards like meeting on Monday, we did not receive any citizens petitions for warrant articles this year. So these that you see are all.
You got an extra copy, you got none?
You don't mind, Kevin?
That's fine, that's fine.
I apologize for. Don't worry, I'm going to get you a copy of the other ones too, David.
We just have to make fun of the fact that he goes.
I've got copies for you later too.
He goes to every meeting, Kevin, so we do that.
I know, I know. I, okay, so the, the first one, we talked about this part-time planner position. Working on and putting together a really nice sort of description of what the responsibilities would be for that position. Looking at other job descriptions from other communities, trying to tackle what our needs within that job description. Second is the master plan funding. We're talking about with that, it's almost a placeholder more than anything else because I am going to potentially with, with support, if there's an appetite for it, going to the senator, representative around a earmark that will hopefully fund that master plan.
If it's an earmark, Kevin, does it go as a warrant, doesn't it?
It would not, it would be completely separate. But this, like I said, as we're working through it, if there's, someone says, no, we, we don't want to do it that way, that's fine, this is another option, it's just sort of a placeholder. We've talked about highway and parks cemetery and the dynamic there a little bit.
Reorganization, reorganization.
And then the.
How to handle that.
Dissolution is the word.
Well, you know, the feeling is with Steve Shepherd retiring, this is a perfect time to try to figure out how to reorganize this thing. And, and there is a feeling for the fact that the highway department could easily take over all the law and knowing that they, that parks and cemeteries does now. There's feeling for the fact that, there's still a fairly strong feeling about eliminating the elected boards and have them all, you know, have the superintendents of those various departments report directly to the town administrator.
I mean, that's the main reason because there are different practices and different ways of doing things.
Well, that's right.
And we've created some financial liabilities and possible legal liabilities by being inconsistent in the past. Second of all, when it comes to being able to implement personnel, bylaws and practices and policies, we have something, we're paying money to oversee all that. Certainly the way I've conceived of it is that there would be no shuffling of duties, change of management or staffs or anything implied by this. All it would do is dissolve the boards of commissioners. And the reason this seems to be worthwhile is because with Steve Ziz leaving and Steve Shepherd retiring, Dave having retired and Phil in supportful roles in support of dissolution of the boards. We talked about creating a DPW, this does not include that, that's going to take longer study and so on.
It's a more, much more in-depth program.
It protects us legally, I think, is the biggest single reason to do it.
I don't follow what's legal protections are.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Legal protections are that we've had instances in this past year where practices done in the highway department were not consistent with what had been done elsewhere in town. We've had cases where we have had to either negotiate situations.
You're talking about the sick leave issue?
That's one of the things that came up, but that had to do more with how things were contracted.
It's union contracts, right?
I understand, union contracts.
It's now a legal issue.
But the issue of having a personal management plan and an HR policy and practice that is consistent across the whole town, that is not currently the situation, so we need to bring that into alignment.
I don't understand why, whether you have a board or not, that needs to be brought into alignment.
Because the highway department, they hire the highway superintendent and who do they return? Who does the reviews?
They do.
They don't though, that's the problem, they should, but they don't. And they don't necessarily do it the same way.
Get them to do the job. And we have, we have standards, wait a minute, we have standards as to what our approaches, we have documents that say, here's how you do the review. Maybe we have to improve them, but we have that.
Let me turn that around.
I'm trying to figure out the liability.
Let me, let me turn it around the other way and say, why wouldn't we want to rationalize our administrative structure by taking this opportunity to remove that level? It was very important when we had three select men and an executive secretary and all these other things, as they got more complicated, had people who, the board supported them directly. Now we've reached a point where we don't think that that advantage is outweighed at all by building in more consistency. And my question would be, why wouldn't you want to make it easier and make it simpler?
I'm not sure that you make it simpler. The fact, the fact that you can turn some of this over to a elected group of people to be responsible for the fields, the sports or whatever, or the roads and how they're laid out, not how they're laid out, but how they're maintained, where you have sidewalks, how you do different road projects and that, that's fine. And then water is another one that's out there. Apparently water is not being considered here, so you still have whatever the issues are for HR, maybe what would be. And then water is another one that's out there, apparently water is not being considered here, so you still have whatever the issues are for HR, maybe water would be, but you have it out there for that. You still have the issue of having a cemetery group that needs to manage the cemeteries based on the state law, maybe the selectmen are the ones that do that in the future.
Let's have that conversation another time.
I have gone to, I have gone to Park and Cemetery meetings for many, many years now, and I know the kinds of things that they have to deal with and the things that they deal with, with the public. Reference to all the sports sort of things as an example, the things that they deal with, with the cemeteries, the phone call that you get that says, not in contact with the earth, how do you do this and whatever. Those are things that that group has managed quite well, and it does take citizen time and effort, but they do it quite well.
But we address this in another meeting because we're never going to get through the warrant list.
I want to have this conversation another time, just a few quick reviews.
Because it does mean additional discussion.
May, may have a conversation about it, this is just what's, these, this is like a schmorgusburg, we may not put everything on our plate.
Select board name alteration, so selectmen to select board, town administrator, housekeeping items, we mentioned that a little bit, I'm still waiting to talk to Laura about getting that draft back from her and what that looks like, so I can better understand what her intent is. And then the solar development pilot, that is in reference to the first, not quite yet officially proposed solar array on, air and dry.
Six air and dry.
Associated with that is, and I don't want to get in the weeds, but there's a payment in lieu of taxes. That most communities could enter into when somebody creates a solar array on a private property, that the town can get some benefit from that. So that's what that one represents, and there's some standard language.
Just putting ourselves in position to use the statutes that have been established and the regulations which have come out.
Yep, took us up a pile of crap. The next one's, I'm gonna let Catherine, you can, this is the, rescinding the debt for water mains and school roof.
Oh, just that when the town voted years ago to authorize the debt, we didn't use it all. For instance, for the school roof, we, we authorized the full amount of the project which included the MSBA, so we need to rescind that now. We, we did it exactly the way they told us, then the mains also, they originally had for one point five million, they used nine hundred and seventy thousand, so we just need to rescind that.
It's not a financial issue, it just, it sort of closes the books up.
It's how it's made.
Yeah.
Same thing with the next one, the TA and clerk, that's a bylaw codification adoption event, so when the codification process was undertaken, they had completed it. Although they found some discrepancies in some of the areas as they've done that codification, and so some of it, I haven't seen it yet, but my understanding, it's basically just making sure, you know, if something's numbered one on our documents here. They've numbered it number two, for example, to make sure that all this ties out correctly, so that when we put online, the codification matches what we have in the books.
And so this is going to be essentially in, the town accepting the bylaws as updated by this in a whole, in, in total.
Correct.
So I, I think that means that we, we're going to publish the new bylaws as a whole, in other words, people need to know it. So, so just thinking of the tool a little bit, that would be an appendix or an attachment.
Dick, can we talk about, I just want to go through this quickly.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand this particular one, would it be an attachment, do you have to put it all in and it would be an attachment?
So what it'll end, the final product will look like, referencing what I know, Beverly's homepage, you go to the clerk's page, you go in there and you click on city ordinance.
I know, I know how it works, but I'm trying to figure out the mechanics of adding to our meeting.
We're getting in the weeds on this, we are going to have to put this on a future agenda, I'd like to keep moving along.
Address standardization, so one thing that happened over the years is that addresses is developments were populated. People sometimes took deliveries on what they wanted their name or what number they want to choose and doesn't.
I still get a tax bill for bar and segment about that.
So would it potentially be changing people's addresses?
No. What it will be going forward, establishing a guideline on how people, how addresses are, are applied.
But you grandfathered in whatever you have.
There's a strong opinion on the.
It's changing.
This is gonna be really impactful, so the, I should say really impactful, but we're, what it will be is there's about a hundred resident, less than a hundred residents who currently have addresses from a public safety standpoint that are concerning. They don't match, so they, we're trying to find where that call's coming from, we'll have trouble, so what we're gonna do, because it's only a hundred. We're gonna work hand in hand with those neighbors that have, are affected by it, subsequent to this, and say, your address is out of compliance, put a letter together, give them the steps that they need to take. It's sort of like when you move, having to change your address, there'll be a similar type of process for people. It's gonna have impacts though, and so we want to be very close to the people when they get that information, so that we have to throw it.
So is it part of the warrant just to say we can do it or not, like people agree to this, what, what's the warrant item?
The warrant item is, I can read, I can share the specific language, what we potentially would use.
It's just generally, do we need the towns and sectors to do this, were we asking them for permission or?
No, it's, it, it's establishing the guidelines going forward.
Okay.
And then retroactively we'll, we'll speak with those people who are already out of compliance.
And try to bring them into compliance, to bring them.
Into compliance.
Over a period of time, that's, that's a better approach.
Absolutely. That's exactly what we're gonna do, we had that conversation, do we force people to immediately have to make that change? And we said, I said, ask me, give me some data, tell me how many people were actually affected, and let's see how we can handle it from there, because if it's ten people, I'll just go knock on their door and have a conversation, we'll order a cup of coffee. If it's a hundred people, we'll find a way to do it somewhere maybe.
So we'll hear more about that.
This is also public database that can affect public safety too, if a new ambulance service comes in, they go to, you know, Seventh Grade Hill where it's gonna be.
Well, the dispatch center needs to have their right address.
Veteran exemption.
And that's relative to real estate related to veterans, surviving spouses that are owned by a trustee. Surviving spouses of those.
So this is an acceptance of the state statute?
Correct, that allows for basically widows of those who've died in action or as a result of complications from their service.
Yeah.
To be able to be exempt from taxes.
A good thing is just to put in CH and, and section. When you get a chance.
No, absolutely. Septic grant program adoption, this is something that the finance team and our Board of Health Director have been working on. Allows, there's a state program that allows you to take funding and, and loan it to people basically at a low interest rate to update their septic systems. So we've, we're coming up with sort of the mechanism of how we handle that, because it's going to touch a number of different departments, but it's something that our team feels we can handle it from an administrative standpoint. And it's also a, a nice benefit for those people in the community who might need a little help and have an issue with their septic.
So we pay for it upfront and they pay us back?
So we'll take two, it allows us to take two hundred thousand dollars and then issue that with interest on it and issue that out to individuals who apply for funding and receive interest back from that. So we're, we should be made whole through the processes, and because it's related to their homes, we have the right to put liens on the insider if people are.
The two hundred thousand comes from where?
State, it's a state loan.
And it basically is a, the biggest advantage to the homeowner is it's potentially access to lower interest loans and if they had to go to a bank to come into Title V and fines.
The two hundred thousand is the maximum residence, is that?
I believe at one time, if asked.
At one time, that, that's what it's represented, it has nothing, it's not a town limit until you use it up and it's, this is an individual house. Can get a septic system up to two hundred thousand dollars worth and come under this program?
They could, it exhausts all of our funds if it was that way.
Oh.
Hopefully not.
He's willing to forty thousand, is the amount that, that a resident could borrow.
And then when we replenish our funds by receiving the funds back over time, that allows us to issue additional, additional funds in some respects. The non-criminal enforcement for the Board of Health, the language has some limitations on what our Board of Health Director can do for, we had an issue that came up basically and. We had the choice to either go ignore the issue or we had to go to court with them, because we didn't have a mechanism for her department to actually issue a fine. So we're trying, and the reason for that is because our, our documents, our code has very prescriptive things that she can find on. So this will be tweaking the language so that we can avoid lawyer fees and going to court right away over smoke detectors. You talk about using town payer dollars, that's not a great place to use it, so I want to make sure she has the tools in the toolbox so that we can avoid going there and actually maybe receive money rather than spending. Exotic animal bylaw.